...everyone, I'm Mike Casserly, the Executive Director of the Council of the Great City Schools, and welcome to our annual Town Hall meeting, this year focusing on the issue of testing in our schools. As you may know, the Council of the Great City Schools has been conducting a comprehensive inventory of tests that big city school districts use across the country with the purpose of more intelligently informing how it is we test, why we test, what we do with the tests, and the like. We have an esteemed panel with us this morning to discuss these issues, but before we do, we want to make about a five- to seven-minute brief presentation of some of the high-level findings that we are coming up with from the inventory that we are doing. To do that, I introduce to you our Director of Research for the Council of the Great City Schools, Ray Hart.[52.62][52.62](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. As many of you know, on last year, our Executive Board asked us to look into testing and assessment, and it has been a discussion that's been widely had across the country as well. In doing so, we began the process of looking at, creating a two-part process for looking at the assessments that we have. The questions that we wanted to ask are, what assessments are had? How are those assessments conducted? How much time are students spending not only taking assessments across our districts, but also how much time are they spending preparing for assessments? So what does that assessment landscape actually look like? And some of our questions are noted here. In addition to that, we decided to do a two-phase study, of which I'm going to give you the beginnings of a process. The first of which was to look at a survey of our districts. We had about 54 of our districts respond in one way or another of the 67 to our assessment survey. We also are going to look at discussions on the ground, talking to principals, talking to teachers, to really get an understanding of how assessments play out in our buildings across our districts, how teachers are utilizing the information, and as well, how teachers are preparing students to take the myriad of assessments that they have in their districts. Some initial findings, just at a very high level. First, we looked at, across pre-K to grade 12, how many assessments are students actually taking on an annual basis? And what you'll note is that between pre-K and grade 12, students will take about 113 assessments in their career. Now, one of the important things to note about the assessments that we're looking at here, we're looking at those assessments that students take that are district mandated, meaning that all of the students in the district take those assessments. There are a number of other assessments that are not included in this number, and they include things like special education, access for ELL students, a number of other assessments that are only given to a sample of students across the district, not the entire population. So we're looking only at the entire population. Of note, in 11th grade in particular, you'll notice that about 11 assessments students will take in the course of the year. That includes intercourse exams, that also includes your college entrance exams, such as an SAT test or an ACT test. So that is the peak, with 8th grade, 6th through 8th graders also taking a number of assessments as well. One of the things we also are looking at is the different uses of assessments. And so you'll notice here that there are about 27 uses of assessments that have been identified across our districts, and it varies. By and large, they're used to inform instruction. And then lastly, one of the things that we looked at is beginning to estimate how much time students are taking across the course of their school year on assessments. And what you'll notice is that between pre-K and grade 12, we have an estimate in terms of number of hours throughout the course of the year that students are taking on assessments. In 8th grade and 11th grade, for example, where students may take a writing exam at the end of the year, they may take a science exam as well, in other grade levels, they may not do that, you'll notice that there are about 30 hours of assessments per year. Assuming that students spend about six hours in a school day, that 30 hours actually equates to about five days out of the 180 days of assessments across the year, or about 3% of the school year. So that gives you kind of a picture of what the assessments look like on an annual basis. And with that, I'll turn the program back over to Michael Casserly.
Thank you, Ray. It's my pleasure to introduce our moderator for this afternoon's discussion, and I'm not going to read his entire bio, because it is a long and very distinguished career that Claudio Sanchez has had. He is a former elementary and middle school teacher, and at the moment, he is the Senior Education Correspondent for National Public Radio. He focuses on the three Ps of education reform: politics, policy, and pedagogy. Sanchez's reports are regularly on NPR's award-winning news magazines, Morning Edition, All Things Considered, and Weekend Edition. And on a personal note, I must say, in all of the years that I have known Claudio Sanchez at NPR, I have always found him the most intelligent, fair-minded, and balanced reporter in the education space of anyone that I know. Claudio Sanchez.[347.11][347.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Flattery will get you nowhere, but thank you. I thought I'd start this way. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times, it was the age of wisdom, it was the age of foolishness, it was the epoch of belief, it was the epoch of incredulity, it was the season of light, it was the season of darkness, it was the spring of hope, and it was the winter of despair. Those are the opening lines to Charles Dickens' study of testing.[382.15][382.15](LAUGHTER). We are here to try and answer some very basic questions, and based on this data, why these questions are important. I'm going to ask our panelists, beginning with my immediate left, to give us three minutes, a three-minute statement about why they're here, why they think they have something important to say about who we test, why we test, and whether we need to stop and rethink testing.
My name is Jamoke Hinton-Hodge, and I'm a school board member. I'm in Oakland, California, and I've been on the board for about six years. So why I'm doing this work, and I think it's really wonderful to kind of be in this place of having this conversation about the purpose of and the value, in particular here, over these last few days, where we are being incredibly stimulated to really think about, fresh thinking, remember, about how we think about education? What is relevant for our young people? What is relevant for black boys? What is relevant for young, you know, girls? And I feel like we've been throwing that up in a lot of ways, obviously from an education standpoint, thinking about communities and parents and families, what does it matter to them, how we do this assessment, how we judge them, how we really make some decisions about where they are going to be projected to go. So I have thought a lot about this in terms of my role, because I think that, as you hear the educators speak to this, they're incredibly eloquent to talk about coordination and talking about, you know, the relevance and the timing of when those tests will come out and whether or not it will really impact their work in some kind of way. And so I've been trying to think about it from the role and the lens of a policymaker. Are there places where policymakers sometimes step in the way of what educators need to be doing and need to be deciding? And so I think that that's something for us, as policymakers, board members, to think about where in this are we providing enough support, maybe even enough cover, when it comes to policy or legislation, to ensure that educators can actually do what it is that they need to do. So important for us to be talking about that, and probably the last thing. I'm glad you're standing up, because I didn't think I would even talk that long. But I'll stop. But I'll just end it with, we have an incredible role as policymakers to think about costs, cost of our folks, you know, the personal time, as well as how much are we really spending on all of these assessments?
We're going to go now to Jax Goldsmith, who I met before we convened here, and who I'm so glad we have, because he's the guy living this. Jax, go ahead, three minutes.
Seeing as I only have three minutes, I'll try and make this as quick as possible, because I know how fast I can go. But yeah, as he said, my name is Jax Goldsmith, I'm from Riverside University. I'm currently the Senior Class President of my graduating class. I honestly feel that some of the testing that we do is somewhat unnecessary in particular views. I know it seems biased, but just let me explain that point. But there are two tests that I wanted to speak on personally, right off the bat, which is the MAP testing and the WKCE testing. Those two are primarily seen as unworthy of students' time. I personally, and some friends of mine that would take the tests with me, would just breeze through it, not even try, and just say, well, I'm done here. And I feel like that it is unworthy, or we don't see the rarity or the necessity to take these tests seriously, because there's no colleges, there's no high schools looking at these scores, saying, hey, we need to make sure they're doing good in these test scores, to pretty much make sure that they're a good fit for our school. I haven't had that problem with Riverside, or had a problem going to my middle school with those tests. I rushed through them myself personally, because I'm a kid, I didn't really feel like doing it. But I did it, I'm Senior Class President, I'm successful, I'm doing things, and I really didn't take those tests seriously. But I just honestly feel like they're somewhat a waste of time. ACT and SAT testing, perfect. Colleges take those scores, writing scores, and pretty much use them to kind of predict what you will do in your college, or the college that you're trying to go to, to try and see if you're a good fit for them. But the WKCE and MAP testing do not do that. So I just feel like that certain tests, if you're going to have the MAP test and the WKCE test, you should form it around that Common Core grading scale that we have just adopted in Wisconsin, and try and generalize it so it's more valuable in the student's perspective.
Thank you, Jax. We're going to go now to Valeria Silva, St. Paul.
I have a kind of love-and-hate relationship with testing. As a superintendent, it's literally required for all of us to provide the opportunity for all students to test. So I start with the fact that originally, when I talk about originally, when we started with No Child Left Behind, remember that time? That was a while ago. We used the testing as a way to measure how the schools were doing. We're still using, in the same way, the testing. The difference is that we have gotten more sophisticated with how we can analyze the data. And I would say, probably in the last five to six years, we have been able to justify more why we take the test, because we're using the data supposedly, and I will say that supposedly, to direct our instruction. And I don't believe our educators in this nation all believe that that is the reason why we test. And how can they not believe? Well, we have huge implications now in most states where testing is being used as part of their teacher evaluation. And it's also, we have, in my case, in St. Paul, we experienced, in the last contract negotiation, testing was part of the negotiation. And what can you negotiate when you're required by state? And also, it has been a political movement to use the test to me, and to many of you who believe in public education, to say, is this a good or a bad school? Is this a good or whatever student? And the implications that that testing give to the student because of the label. So when we call it the bubble kid, or what we call it the whatever. That is my issue with that. Also, if someone would say to me today, you got this magic wand, what would you like to do instead of testing? I don't know if I have an answer, because I also want to know, when my students come in my classroom as an educator, where they are, and where they are moving, and where do they need to end up. And I do believe, we don't always do that, and our students don't have, as you just said, a sense of why am I testing, and there's no sense of ownership. So then, in this country, we have to figure out how we're going to make the testing relevant to the students, as well as relevant for the educators to change or wiggle the way the education is being delivered at this time.
Going to go to Chris.
I'm Chris Minnick, I'm the Executive Director of CCSSO, the Council of Chief State School Officers. We represent the 50 state school chiefs across the country. And when I come to gatherings like this, I largely feel like it's all our fault.[920.43][920.43](LAUGHTER). Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. Mike consistently reminds me of that. But I get the opportunity to represent 50 great leaders, and it is fascinating to me, when I have conversations with our folks, it's usually the federal government's fault that we're doing some of these things we're doing. And then, when I talk to district folks, it's usually the state's fault. And so I'm here today because, number one, I believe states can get significantly better about the incentives we're putting forward in our testing system. So what that means is, I really just wanted to listen to Jax' talk a little longer, because he talked about relevance. And relevance is absolutely critical to our testing systems. If kids aren't engaged in what they're doing on these assessments, I don't even really want to use those results to see how we're doing. I'm thinking about 12th grade testing in some places. I'm not sure, but I don't have a 12th grader yet, my kids are a little younger, but when I do, I'm sure they will be out the door to do what's next in 12th grade. So I think the motivation effects are something we have to think about as we're setting up state testing programs. But mainly, I'm here today because, last week, the Great City Schools and CCSSO released a statement talking about the need to address this problem. I think, I was pleased and very excited to work with Mike and his team to get this out the door, because I think it was an important statement for the country to hear, that we're taking this seriously. That this is, we're not going to back away from having measurement and understanding how our schools are doing, but we do need to have a conversation about 113 tests across a student's career. I think those are two things that we can hold in our head at the same time. It doesn't have to be throw this all out, it doesn't have to be, you know, a situation where we're over-testing our students every couple weeks. So anyway, that's why I'm here. Thanks, Claudio.
Dr. Kaya Henderson?
I am here for four reasons. The first one is because they made me come.[1041.23][1041.23](LAUGHTER). That's the truth. I'll start with the truth. Mike made me come. Just kidding, sort of. Second reason that I'm here is because I serve as the Chancellor of DC Public Schools. And while lots of people think that the leader of the organization is the one who sets the direction, in fact, my main job is to be responsive to the students and the families that we serve. And when my students and my families and my educators say that we have a problem with testing, then it's my job to figure out how to fix that problem. I'm also here because I'm a parent of two little black boys, and I'm concerned about their progress, and I'm also concerned about how testing affects their self-confidence, how it affects their sense of self. And so as a parent, I want to understand how we do testing better. And then, finally, I'm here because I'm an education thought leader by virtue of my role as chancellor, and I think that we need to find the reasonable middle. I think we've gone from no, or slim to no accountability, or veiled accountability, or not having a clear understanding of where all of our young people are, to kind of uber-accountability and test mania. And I think there's a reasonable middle. And I think as education thought leaders, as we all are in the room, I think it is incumbent upon us, we know, we owe it to our students and our families to figure this out. We're in the middle of a grand experiment. Only a few years ago did we figure out that not all of our children were doing as well as we thought they were. That was a tremendous revelation. But it also meant that we had to do something, and so we've done something. And if that something is not working, then it's incumbent upon us to find the next something, or the right something that will work.
Tucker?
Mark Tucker, I am President and CEO of the National Center on Education and Economy, and I assume Mike invited me to this event, because a couple of months ago, we issued some ideas in a report about how to change the accountability system in the United States. And I'm just going to give you a few highlights from the executive summary. It begins in a very simple way. The test-based accountability system that is now universally mandated in the United States has had 10 years to prove itself. The result is very low teacher morale, plummeting applications to schools of education, the need to recruit too many of our teachers from the lowest levels of high school graduates, a testing regime that has narrowed the curriculum from millions of students to a handful of subjects, and a very low level of aspiration. There is no evidence that it is contributing anything to improve student performance, much less the improved performance of the very low-income and minority students for which this system was created. Period.[1233.83][1233.83](APPLAUSE). So the question is, what ought to replace it? My organization has been doing research on the top 10 performers worldwide in national and state education systems. There is not a single one of those systems worldwide that has an accountability system that looks anything like the one that we have been using here in the United States for the last 10 years. And so we think it's reasonable to look at those countries, the ones in which student performance is highest, and by the way, in which equity is far higher than in the United States, and look at what they're doing. And what you see in those countries, not one of them, not one of them has accountability tests more often than three times in a student's entire career in elementary and secondary education. There is not one of them that has a year-by-year testing requirement. What we have done by insisting on a year-by-year testing requirement is absolutely ensure that the states can only afford to use cheap, lousy tests that will test only a very small part of what the Common Core was designed to produce in our students. We have, in effect, a system that is designed to subvert the Common Core in its very essence with respect to what the Common Core actually calls for. We have a system, by the way, in which the people who suffer most, from what I just described, are poor and minority students. Because in most schools in the United States, it is not these tests that teachers are teaching to in the wealthy suburbs. It's in the cities where this is going on, and it's schools serving the poor and minority kids. It is their performance, more than any other, that is being held down by the system that we've got. It is those expectations which are the lowest. And so we laid out in this report an idea about an alternative system. Part of it has to do with the structure of testing. So we proposed the following. We proposed, first of all, that, and this is, by the way, a proposal not for the United States, it is a proposal for individual states, which is how we think it ought to work. And we think each state ought to have a single instrument that is used to test all kids when they enter their first grade, not for accountability purposes, but because we think it's crucial that teachers in the first grade, at the beginning of first grade, know just where those kids are, so they can put a program together that is going to meet their needs as individual kids. We are proposing that there be accountability tests at the end of 4th grade, 8th grade, and a test in 10th grade, which is not a 10th grade test, but which a student can take at any time in the 10th or 11th and 12th grade, which is set to what it means to be literally college and work-ready. We also think there ought to be tests given at grades 2 and 6, but those tests ought to be sampling tests, not given to every student, used to figure out where the school is. All of these tests would be used, first of all, their results would be made public, and all of them could be used by the state to find, essentially to identify schools that appear to be in trouble. We would not label a school because of its score in a test. We would have an inspection team go and look to see what is going on, and if there is a problem that needs fixing. But fundamentally, what this report is about is not testing. It's about changing the assumption on which our tests are based. When you go back and look at the origins of No Child Left Behind, it is an act that is written by a nation that has gotten angry with its teachers, and wants to hold them accountable for the poor performance of the kids. But I will let you in on a little secret. The teachers had nothing to do with creating a system that is based on cheap teachers. It's all the rest of us that did that. And when you look at what is going on in the top-performing countries, it is exactly what our noon speaker was talking about. They have greatly raised their requirements for teachers. It's very hard to get into education schools in those countries. Their standards are very high. Licensing standards are very high. The pay system is different. They have a system now, they didn't use to, in which they're treating their teachers like professionals, exactly as our luncheon speaker talked about. This system that we are proposing would substitute for a blue-collar system of accountability, which is what we've got, a professional system of accountability, much more like what would you find in a law firm, in an architectural firm, or an engineering firm.
Minutes there, but it's okay. I know you're going to take off early. I want to open it up, because I'd like to ask the rest of the panelists whether they disagree with anything that Mark just said. Did anything that he said not ring true in your experiences? Take it away, whoever has some thoughts about that.
So Mark and I have talked about this a lot, so he won't be surprised by what I'm about to say, I don't think. But I think what I worry about is the capacity to actually do the system that Mark describes. So in this country right now, how do we get to a situation where we have higher expectations out of our teachers coming out of prep programs, so that we could have that system function the way we want it to in this country? I also disagree just slightly with his premise. I think we have seen some growth, especially in certain areas across the country, because of an increased focus on how kids are doing. For a long time, we let gaps persist, and we didn't have assessments to show us that. So I was in a state, in Oregon, where, in one of the big cities, Portland Public, there were big gaps that weren't being shown, because we didn't have assessments that were disaggregated. So I think there are some things that, I agree with a lot of what Mark said, but I don't know how quite to make that step into that system. And I think that's going to require some state policy changes, so I'd like to have that discussion, so.
Yes, Jamoke.
Absolutely. So I heard this sentence, angry, we are a nation that is angry with teachers for the poor performance of our kids. And I would say, from, out of communities of color, we are righteously angry about the performance of our children, but we, and we do hold teachers accountable for that. We believe that teachers have to be the best of the best in working with our children. And so whether it is a, so I don't know if I have any condemnation for, right, teachers, wholeheartedly, like I don't want to be blanketed around that, but I do think in our communities, in particular of color, we can be really, really clear that we rely on teachers to do a good job. And so that is where I would hope that, and I don't, I won't disagree a lot around the testing format or how that is, but I do hope that teachers will be able to have measurements and have some kinds of tools that they believe are relevant and important for them to increase and improve their own craft. So there is a lot of attention on the students in this, but I would think that a teacher wants to be able to measure and track and look and think about how their practice improves in order for our children, who are incredibly dynamic and beautiful and come to them whole, how they will actually enhance their learning. So, yeah, so I definitely don't want to be caught up in the blanketed, I'm angry with teachers, not at all. But I want my child to be educated.
I want Mark to respond in a minute, but I do need to ask Kaya Henderson and Ms. Silva, from a superintendent's point of view. I often hear people say, well, you know, every time you bring up international examples, we're different. America's not Finland. It's not South Korea, it's not Singapore. So it's almost as if we dismiss the examples because they're not us. And I wanted to get Dr. Henderson and Ms. Silva to tell us whether that is part of the reason, or the reason, why we put up so many barriers and obstacles to looking at other models that seem to be working well, and yet we dismiss because we're Americans.
I'll take that. I think, so first of all, I think the international comparisons, the point of them is to try to motivate people to do something different, right? To, you know, be urgent about the fact that we're not measuring up, or what have you. But no parent that I know cares what kids in Finland are doing or Singapore, they want to know what they're doing. They want to know what's going on with their kid. And so, I think we banned, like, we banned her about with this international stuff, and I think we just need to contextualize it differently. I think looking at high-performing systems from wherever they are is a good thing, right? I don't think it's the rationale for why we should be educating our kids differently. That being said, you know, I, I don't, I have not been to Finland. I'm excited about what we can learn from Finland, but we don't have to, I, I mean, we're not Finland. That doesn't mean we can't learn from Finland. I'm DC. I'm very different than, than St. Paul, right? And so, I think we have to do both and, and I think we're smart enough to be able to learn from other places and contextualize for our own situations. I mean, I actually think that what Mr. Tucker has, has described is not unreasonable. In fact, I was sharing with Chris Minnick, just down here, that, you know, I wonder if there are gateway, you know, years where you need to test. I think the challenge really is this transition from where we are to where we need to be, and I'll tell you why. When we figured out that there was a problem, we kind of went whole hog on this, all-out, every-year, everything testing, right? And I think what we learned is that's not the right approach. When I try something new in a school district, I don't let every single school do this new innovation. You pilot, you try, and then you figure out what works. What I said to Chris is, we could, and, and I think this leads to the transition conversation, we know we have to do something different. Let's take a few districts, allow them to pilot a different kind of a system, and see how it works, right? And I think if we're able to do that, then we'll learn some things, we'll mess some things up, we'll fix some things, but then, we might be able to migrate to a different system. The challenge is, I mean, I spent 22 years thinking about human capital, and, and our former lunch speaker said it, right? Like, schools were compromised when talent was drained, when women and minorities were, had access to greater job opportunities. And so, we saw great brain drain in education, outside of an infusion of human capital, right? Or, very concentrated and very rapid expansion of, of human capital capacity, then it doesn't matter what kind of a, an accountability regimen that we have, if we're not equipped to provide the young people that we are teaching with high-caliber teachers.
Dr. Sidra.
Sir, I would echo what Kaia said. I, I do believe that, in my personal experience from growing up in Chile and had an educational system, and it's quite similar to what we have here in America, a little bit more segregated even. So, then, what I do believe is, there's no high demand for, I mean, let me say it this way, there's no this much desire from people to be teachers anymore, okay? We have less and less people applying to teaching positions. So, then, as Kaia said, it's human capital, but then, if we are going to raise the status socially on the teachers, we definitely have to bring more money to the table. And I tell you, as a superintendent, as much as I don't want the excuse that it's always about money, if I would have to pay the teachers what they would be doing by being a first-year engineer in 3M, which is my state, we couldn't afford. We would have classes of 50 students. And if this country doesn't change the perception in the young society that education is given, that it's not a need, we have a system that is complying to what we have to do from the bottom up to the top. So, the transition, I mean, you have very good ideas, the transition from getting the profession to a higher caliber, having people who are willing and to be teachers, but also get compensated better, and having students, families, and society in general be more respectful of their profession, because nobody tells you, I know how to be a heart surgeon, but everybody tells you how to be an educator and for sure, a superintendent.[894.23][894.23](LAUGHTER). So, then, we would have, we had to stop the blame, the shame, the complaint, and we had to do some actions. We are wasting time in, to trying to focus on if the test is good or not. We need to focus, why are we testing, and how is affecting the future of the students? And I don't think there's a, I mean, I would love to sit down and develop with you guys all this, but it's going to take 20 years to get there, because there's a, not a good perception of being educators in this country, except if you become a minister or superintendent, because we make a lot of money.
So, keep that in mind, Mike. In 2000, what is it, '35, we will be meeting here again to see if we are where we should be. Jax, before I throw it back to Mark, I, I want to get your thoughts. You've been listening to all this, and I'm curious, do you ever compare yourself to kids in other countries, let alone across this, across the city, across the state?
Yes, definitely. One of my big things for myself is that if I am not at the same level as someone else, I am not doing my best. Point play, period. If I see someone else with an A in a class and I have a B+, I'm not doing my best, I'm going to work hard to get that A. And that's just in the classroom. If I see people internationally getting like 36s on ACT scores, getting the best scores possible, then I'm going to try my hardest to get that 36 as well, because if he can do it, why can't I? Anybody can do whatever anybody puts their mind to. So, I see it as, if we take, we, we could definitely take pieces and bits from other international, the teaching regimes, and kind of like, I want to say, like, blend it with ours and kind of make the, a great thing, because if they can be over across the seas, getting these test scores, doing good in their classes, and come to us, come to our schools, and blow our classes out the water, no sweat, then how come we can't do it when we were going over there? I have a friend who came from Japan. Her name is Mimi. She comes here, she came here from Japan, and she takes our tests, and she breezes right through them, and she's in AB Calc, I believe, just breezing through all the tests, 100%, 100%, 100%. And if she can do it, why can't anybody else do it? And if they're doing it there easily, we should be able to do it easily as well.
So...
So, let me, let me add something I forgot, and I think it's critical. In America, we educate all kids, and we mean all. And we went to China, and we went to different places with, with Kaia and the council, and we watched how they were limited or non-special education students in the classroom, very little number of students who spoke no English, sitting around and taking a test after 12 months. And then, also, there's, it's, there's a selection of who gets educated or not, and sometimes that selection is being done by the schools. So, then, you have to apply and be accepted to be in the school X, and to me, that's not playing with the same rules.
So, Mark, you've heard all this. I'm sure you've not heard it for the first time. What do you say?
I have heard it all, and it really worries me, to tell you the truth. Jax, what, what occupation are you shooting for?
Mechanical engineer.
Mechanical engineer. Suppose that I told you that global companies could hit, global companies could hire people with the skills you hope to get for one-quarter of what American mechanical engineers are paid.
Well, I kind of think that if we could compare it, then there's something kind of mismatching, something not adding up. If I'm getting the same skills as someone internationally, and they're getting paid only, you're saying that they're getting paid a quarter of what I make, I will make?
I, I, this is not a theoretical example. My, my son was, for a long time, an electrical engineer. He was a designer of custom computer chips. And he called me, he was working for one of the big companies in the Silicon Valley at the time. He was in his early 30s. Called me up, and he said, you know, Dad, I just discovered that my company has hired a whole bunch of people who are on my team, and they're in China. They can do everything I can do, and they're making one-quarter of what I am making. And he asked himself, he asked me, but he was also asking himself, did I choose the wrong occupation, meaning engineering? You should all think about this. Honestly, I want to read you some statistics. This is the US rankings on the PISA assessments. The first year they were given was the year 2000. We got 15, we were number 15 in the rankings in the year 2000. The most recent year in which they were given was the year 2012. We were number 24. In mathematics in 2000, we were 17. In the year 2012, we were 36. In 2000, we were 14 in science. 2012, we were 27. What is happening in the world right now is that more and more employers are global employers. They have to be. Big companies, small companies, medium-sized companies, and they are sourcing their talent, the people who work for them globally. And that is because it makes no difference where you're going to sell the services or the products that you're making. You can have them made in one place and sold on the other side of the world. And that makes it possible and necessary for those, necessary because if you don't do this, your competitor will, and you'll be out of business, for them to source their people all over the world. That's the situation that we're facing. Kaia, I'm a big admirer of yours, but I think you're wrong. It makes all the difference in the world, how well we are doing relative to other countries, because if we don't do a lot better than the statistics I just read to you, this country is going to be unable to employ larger and larger numbers of its people. And do you know who's going first? It's poor, black, and Hispanic kids. Look at the number, at the unemployment numbers. Do you know why that unemployment is there? It's because they don't have the skills that global employers need, and they are asking far more money than they can actually get for the skills they actually have. This is not merely an important matter, it's absolutely crucial for this country that we adopt a global perspective. Back in the night, late 1970s and early 1980s, Japanese companies, manufacturing companies, blew the top off American manufacturing companies. All of a sudden, coming out of nowhere, they were able to make products that they made in half the time, cost much less than American products, and they were higher quality. And a whole lot of American companies went out of business. That's where the United States is now. That's where we are, as a country.
Jamoki is dying to, to say something here.
And so, you're going to have to, and you're going to, and I can't wait for...
And I'll have to correct for the record.
Hello? I can't wait for Kaia to correct for the record. So, and, and, and so, this is in that moment where it's like, you know, you, everything's flying through my head, right? And I'm thinking about like a patriarchal capitalist society in which it is set up to do exactly what it's doing in Detroit, what it's doing in Oakland. We moved away from manufacturing, right? But we had an African-American president who talked five, six years ago about what the direction was, that he wanted around manufacturing. How did we respond to that? How are we responding to those particular kinds of things? So, I don't know that there's necessarily even a disagreement or argument, but I, let's not act like blindly some kind of way, America has a paradigm that is set up, in fact, for African-American, people of color, poor people, not to be successful. So, like, I mean, like, let's be really clear around that. And so, for me, the conversation has to be about, Kaia talked last week about the Titanic, you know? We've all sat here and talked about the hard lift around pushing some of these changes around the system. You know, is it going to come politically in some kind of way? Is that where it needs to be pushed? Does it need to be a grassroots movement around parents and families talking about, I'm not taking that test, or I don't need that particular kind of test? Or teachers saying, this is how I actually want to do my craft? So, I think that if we could create some spaces where we're actually speaking real truth to power around how we want to shift some, how do we want to do some systems, shifts and changes, and take some bold steps around that. And this, and, and, so, so that's, that's just my level of like, listening and truth around this and thinking about American history, of how you kind of speak to that. And the comparison, the last thing I would say around the comparison piece is, I mean, what are we measuring, and how are we measuring it? So, for me, as an African-American woman who sits here, quite often, the lens is never my lens. The lens is never a lens of African people, or how we get down, how we think creatively, how we're kinetic, how we learn. That is, that's never particularly the standard by which we're talking about. So, again, I, and I don't want to play a hate across the world by any means, but when I heard superintendents and educators talk about what was in China, they also didn't see creativity. They didn't see a level of innovation. They didn't see some like, critical thinking skills popping off as our young folk, I mean, we've been looking at things all, I mean, this brother sat down there, was like, I hope you're not going to be nervous. He was like, I have spoken in front of 300-some-odd. Whoop, whoop. He's like, ready to do this work and stand in front. So, I, I, let's be really clear about who we are as Americans, right? And what it is that we can do in this process. And I think creativity, for me, is a, and resilience is an important factor, and I just want to change the testing modalities. I want to have that conversation.
I, I want to bring back and remind people that many have said, look, testing is about civil rights as much as it is about assessment of our young people. But Chancellor Henderson, you wanted to respond as well.
I mean, I want to say for the record, I never said we weren't competing against other folks, right? The question was, should we dismiss things internationally or what have you? Of course, we're competing against countries internationally, and as an economist, your job is to think about the country. As a chancellor, my job is to think about the 47,000 students that I serve and their families, and the way to get them to jobs and college that are going to allow them to compete is to figure out what motivates them. What motivates them is not what's happening in Finland. What moves hearts and minds to get people to demand a better education, to get our, our students willing to work harder, is not what's happening in other countries. And so, I'm simply saying that international comparisons are useful for some things, important for some things, but in terms of motivating boots on the ground, right? Because I don't think that if we simply change the accountability structure, or if we change the curriculum, that we'll get to where we need to go. If we don't create a sense of urgency and demand in our students and our families, then we won't get to where we need to go. And in order to do that, I think, in fact, we have to find a different motivation.
Yeah, Chris, but let me get Mark to respond first.
I agree, Kaia, that, that these international comparisons are not going to motivate our kids. My point was, that if we are way behind other countries, does it not make sense, first, to look for solutions in the strategies they are using?
And I said yes to that. I said yes to that when asked.
So, okay, that's, that's my key point. Honestly, I think one of the great differences between the United States and every single one of the top-performing countries is the way we do high school. On one, on the very point you were just talking about motivation. You visit American high schools, we visit American high schools, and we see the only kids who are motivated to take tough courses and work hard are those kids who think that they're going to go to a selective college. The rest are there to hang out, because they believe correctly that they can get into a community college if they just get passing grades, which essentially means showing up. They don't find out until they get to a community college that there's a little more to it than that. In these other countries, folks, there is no high school diploma. There is no such thing. There is a qualification, and a qualification is basically a statement about what courses you have to take and what grades you have to get in order to fulfill your dream, whether it's being a carpenter or a brain surgeon. And you go to those countries, and you see high schools full of kids who are taking tough courses and working hard, whether they want to be a brain surgeon or a carpenter. That's just one example of something crucially important we can learn from countries in Asia, Australasia, and Europe.
Chris, you wanted to jump into...
But also, the segregation in those countries is done at age in sixth grade. So, you are given a path where you have to follow.
I mean, you're talking about cherry-picking, about just educating the, the elite.
Yes. And, and I struggle with that, and I still cannot find the connection, sir, I can't, Mark, and between the wages of people who are engineers in other countries... between the wages of people who are engineers in other countries and the relationship with testing. Maybe I'm a little slow, it's been a long week, but I can't find the connection. I mean, I, I take your data, I see it, but more or less, testing is not going to get my students to do better. And it's going to give us, a way for us to decide what they need. It's like going to the doctor and the doctor looking at you and say, "I think you got Ebola today." Okay, but I'm not going to give you the testing because, you know what, you were tested last month. So the reality is, we have to figure out how to not get confused with the testing and not getting the responsibility that is, we must educate kids color. And this is a perfect sexy discussion for us as educators to blame the testing, or too much or too little, and not face the fact that our kids are not graduating ready.
Chris.
You guys always have this much fun at your conferences. I want to come back. I want to come back. First off, I live in Virginia, but after listening to Kaia, I think I want to move into DC.
Have the highest AP participation rate in the country.
There you go, there you go. So, so I, I actually wrote down almost exactly what Superintendent Silva said before she said it, that we just, we're having the two different conversations here, I think. I mean, one is about whether or not we should care about international comparisons, which I think we should care about. And the other one is how much we should test our students. I don't, I do not see a connection between those, those two pieces. No, I'm with you on that. And I guess for me, if high-performing countries are testing less, that doesn't necessarily mean it's because they're high-performing because they are testing less. So, so I think we have to have the conversation as a group about what the right level of measurement is for the system, what the right level of measurement is for the kids as they go through the system, right? And can we mine off of the measurement that we use for students? Like, I mean, Jax talks about those tests that matter to him. Those are the ones I want to be getting at if I'm, if I care about how the system's doing. I want to know how he's doing on those tests. So I think that's the conversation we should be having. But I'll be quiet for a little bit and listen, because this is a lot of fun.
Well, you know, if I may, when I ran into Mark earlier today and we were talking about a little bit of this, the connection that, and even if I was to be reporting on this conference, I guess the connection I meant to the testing and international comparisons, workforce needs, the disconnect with what kids learn, I guess I see them as dominos. I see them as, testing as a consequence of policies that have little or no connection to preparing kids for the workforce. I mean, that's the connection that I see. Am I, am I wrong here? Am I off?
In my mind, there is a connection. And the connection is, is actually a fairly simple one. It really comes down to the Common Core. I have no idea what the people in this room think about the Common Core, but for me, the Common Core represents a real aspiration that all kids in this country finally are going to have the kinds of skills in the future that we have only in the past expected our elites to have. That's what it says to me. And, and, yes, but the Common Core does not mean a goddamn thing unless you can have tests that actually test a fair amount of what is in the Common Core. And what we now have are tests that measure only the very bottom part of that expansive skills. If you, like me, think that our future as a country, and especially the future of poor and minority kids, depends on getting the kinds of skills that are represented by the Common Core, and I believe that, then you had better be worried about what kind of tests we have. And my point about the other countries with which we are competing is they've made a decision. They've made a decision that they are not going to use low-quality, cheap tests that test only a small range of skills. They're going to have tests which measure far more than that. And they know that they don't, they know that, that they have decided to spend their money differently than the United States. We're spending a hell of a lot of money on a lot of cheap tests. They're spending the same amount of money on a handful of expensive ones. That is very tightly connected to what we want for our kids.
Can I jump in, please? So you said, no, no, yes, yes, very, very, very briefly. So I agree with everything that you just said. And you said earlier that teachers didn't create the system, right? Well, we haven't created the tests that are cheap and low quality. And in fact, I think that the reason why you have these two consortia is because we're all saying, "We need different tests, we need better tests, we need high-quality tests." So I don't, I don't think that we should be spending a whole lot of money on low-quality tests either. That's not the conversation that we're having, though. And so there are all of these issues, right? How much do you test? What kind of test? How many tests? Is it every grade or some grades? And that is not the complex conversation that has to happen. The only question is, do we test at every grade level or not? Let's, let's unpack this and deal with all of the components. There are people in this room making a zillion bucks on assessments, right? And, 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 and the truth of the matter is, the truth of the matter is, you're not screaming at them, right? You're screaming at us. Well, guess what? I don't make assessments, not my gig. I am, I want to be reasonable, I want to be thoughtful. I don't have any options. I like the, the recommendations that you make, but guess what? If we don't have great tests at whatever your grades are, it doesn't matter if we test less, right? So let's talk about the caliber of the test. Let's talk about the people in here who make the test. Let's talk about that kind of stuff.
We're about to throw this out to the, to the audience for Q and A. There are microphones and I guess just one microphone here. Be thinking about a question maybe in one minute. I want to do something, though, with Jax. Jax's principal is here, Mr. Harris. And I want to ask Jax to ask his principal whether he agrees with what he said earlier, which was, hey, tests, at least some tests, don't matter. So why am I taking them? Only the ones that matter are the ones that are going to have consequences. Certainly, if I'm going on to higher ed, looking into engineering schools. So Jax, put your principal on the spot. And Mr. Harris, I want you to go up to the, to the microphone there first.
And you will graduate, okay?
Have you ever asked, have you ever asked Mr. Harris why he gives so many tests?
No, but now that he's here, let's get to it. But indeed, though, I do, I would like to know if you actually agree with the statement I made, like about the MAP and the WKCE are, like, the relevance of them. Like, we practically take them in almost every grade that we go into. So if we're spending so much time and so much money on those tests, should, do you really agree with me on the relevance and the value that we have in them?
Thanks, Jack. And I would just like to say thank you for allowing me to participate in this great discussion today. Michael Harris, principal at Riverside University High School here in Milwaukee. With assessment, I see assessment as a valuable tool as an educator because it really should inform the, the work that we do in our classrooms. It also provides us an opportunity to find out what our students know and are able to do. I think for us in Milwaukee, the great difficulty we have is we take so much time away from our students and our teachers to interact, to build those quality relationships because we know that's a motivator for many of our kids that come to our public schools. And I want to say, as a public school, we teach everyone. We don't pick and choose. And so we want to make sure as our students come into our buildings that we have some baseline data to move them forward. However, with the Common Core, making sure that our students with mobility issues, if they're choosing to go to various schools, they have the same opportunities. And so I, I, I value the fact that we use assessments to inform our instruction. I also value the, the opportunity it provides us to help our students grow and to set goals for themselves as they move out throughout their high school journey. But it can, it's burdensome on the school. It's burdensome on the, on the schools. It's attacking teachers. And it doesn't create the environment in which we should be doing the most important work, which is teaching our kids.
But, Mr. Harris, I think you told me earlier today, you test kids into your school.
Yes.
Now, that's a test, a test that has consequences. Of the testing that you do, ballpark, what percentage has consequences, means something?
Of course, we use college and career readiness benchmarks. We're, you know, we're an AP school. So we offer the most AP advanced placement courses in, in the city of Milwaukee. So we know that for Riverside, our goal, our focus, our vision, our mission is to make sure that students leaving our facility is college and career ready. So we use MAP scores because we have aligned those two college and career readiness benchmarks to identify students that are on track for those pieces. However, students that do not meet those benchmarks, it's truly up to us to make sure we have systems and human capital in place because I don't believe programs assist those students. I believe human capital. Humans being in the classroom has the biggest impact on our learning for our young people. So we do utilize testing. We utilize assessments that the district has invested in to identify those strengths and weaknesses of all of our students.
So Jax, are you going to get in trouble for asking him a question at all? No? You'll be fine, right?
I highly doubt it.
Okay. So anybody out there have questions? Please come to the, thank you, Mr. Harris. There's one question, or first, could you identify yourself? And remember, it's a question, not a speech.
Okay, you got it. My name is Jill Spearing. I am a retired educator, primary grades of thirty-five years, and now I'm on the school board.
Where?
In Nashville, Tennessee. It's interesting to be on the other side of the table. I think there's something that hasn't been clarified in this discussion today, although it's very lively and entertaining. And that is the difference between testing to inform instruction and high-stakes testing, that teachers receive little information to inform their instruction. That's what I'm against. As a classroom teacher, I knew what assessments to use that informed my instruction. Nobody had to bring that to me from the State Department of Education. I knew what that was. And I used those assessments to see if my students were learning the skills that were required in that particular grade level.
So your question, please.
Okay. Well, maybe I don't have a question. I, I guess my question is, I'd like to hear more, a differentiation between high-stakes testing and just testing that we do. I think we get confused when we, when we use the term interchangeably because it's a big difference. Thank you.
We'll fold in the answers or views from the panel on the, with the next question as well.
Jody London, Oakland Unified School District Board Member. And my question is actually quite similar. It seems that you need a way to know if you're making progress. So let's say we go with Mr. Tucker's proposition that you only do a high-stakes test every few years, but you need to know, has a kid picked up in first grade the skills that you want the kid to have in alignment with Common Core? So I'm really interested in the panel's thoughts on how you balance the kind of week-to-week, month-to-month, am I making progress as an educator, particularly educating a diverse, you know, set of kids in urban schools with what's going to determine a kid's future?
So is, really, I guess it boils down to the diagnostic value of testing versus the accountability of testing, right? Anybody want to take that up?
I do a little bit. So the problem of high-stakes tests and you not getting the information that you need, whose fault is that? The testing companies? How long does it take them to give us the results back? If you were able to get, I'm sorry, assessment people, I'm going in. Because, because the truth of the matter is, if we had, if we had better designed and delivered tests that got you the information that you needed immediately, you wouldn't have a problem with it, right? And the challenge is, you get this stuff, I mean, we're going to get Park stuff twenty years from now. Okay, maybe not. But like, we're not on track to getting the information in a timely manner. And that is, I mean, we put men on the moon, we like, why can't we fix this?
Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah, in the, in the plan I put together, I think, this plan, this, this bloody, oh, mic? Am I speaking my mic? Am I doing that? Excellent. Got it. In this plan, I would distinguish between two types of tests. Kaia, Kaia said it right. There are three gateways in this plan. And there are, and they correspond to the times when each student in the system is, is assessed. There's another kind of test which is in here, which is for the purpose of finding out where the school is, broken down by subgroups. But it doesn't produce scores for individual tests. And the purpose of those is to see whether something is going on in that school that makes it deserve a visit by a group of people who are trying to figure out whether that school is in trouble and needs help. Those are two very different testing purposes. The third purpose is, is assessment. And notwithstanding our noon speaker's problem with that term, I would distinguish between assessment and testing. In the United States, we have this idea evidently that the only way you can find out how the kids are doing month by month and week by week is giving them a test. That is not a universal idea in the rest of the world at all. In most of the Asian countries, they put an enormous amount of effort, school by school, into developing questions that teachers ask during the lesson. And the purpose of that is for them to know exactly where the kids are as they are teaching the lesson. So if the kids are not picking it up, they can do something about it. There are, the big problem, one of the biggest problems in my view with, with the regime that No Child Left Behind put in place was that one big response of school districts was to say, "Okay, there's a big test at the end. So what we're going to do is produce mini versions of that test after three months, and another three months, and another three months." Do you know what that does? That, that means that the regime of No Child Left Behind, which had year-by-year testing, which greatly expanded testing, that regime quadruples the amount of testing. And it's, in my view, unnecessary. There are other ways to find out how kids are doing.
Let's, let's go to the next question, please.
Thank you. I'm Candy Olson. I'm a school board member in Hillsborough County, Tampa, Florida. Mr. Tucker, it's nice to see you in person instead of my, on my iPad, Kaia. Yes, everything you said, please just keep saying it. So you talked about teachers and the anger that the nation seems to have felt at teachers. You also talked about how do we make sure we're reaching every child? And I would add a third piece. And that is that a test that is high stakes for a school or a teacher is probably not high stakes for the best and brightest kids who go, "I just have to pass." So how do we separate? How do we unpack so that we get rid of testing as a weapon and as a blunt object and use it as a tool to reach every single child?
Chris, go ahead. Or Jax?
Kind of student view of this, but, um. Regarding that, I feel that the way that it will probably impact the student body as a whole nationally is if, like I said earlier, we kind of compact and generalize the materials being put into those tests that we always have. Because if we're doing them so much, we might as well, like what Mark was saying, we might as well have them show what we're learning. And maybe we don't even need them to have, we don't need to have it every year or every two years. Maybe we do need them just every three years. But I'm saying that if we're going to test so much, we need to make it valuable and have it generalized so you know exactly what we're learning and exactly how we're doing it. And if the teachers are there helping us along the way. Because if it's generalized, if all the schools are being taught the same thing with the Common Core, then there shouldn't be a problem. If there's a school in Detroit and then a school in California who has discrepancies with schools in, let's say, Florida or Arizona, then there's a problem. Because if we have Common Core, there shouldn't be discrepancies between the grades. So I feel that the way to involve and impact a student body is to generalize the materials within those tests that we have.
Chris?
I just, I, I think we should be pushing towards not giving assessments that don't have any impact on students. So like, if it doesn't matter to a kid, what are we doing? Like, so the assessments he listed off as mattering versus not matter, I, I mean, I think that's happening in a lot of places. And states are probably the most guilty of this out of anybody. So how do we, as states, start mining what matters to kids? So that, that would be the thing that I'm taking to our membership to have a conversation about is, as we set up these systems, yes, we need to know how our schools are doing across the state. So we got to figure out ways to do that without saying, "Okay, well, we got to stop everything and give another test that doesn't matter to any of these kids." So that would be sort of my interpretation of what I heard from, from Jax there. I think it's really important.
Next question.
First, this kind of tees up my question. I'm Pam Gold. I'm from Orange County, Florida. I'm a school board member. I'm not an educator by background. Jax, just so you know, we are reshoring manufacturing and a lot of jobs right now. For the first time in three decades, in the last three years, we've returned 650,000 jobs to the shore. And that's just a report out in May of this year. That kind of brings me to the, the point I wanted to make. I, I think that we're having a lot of talk about testing. I mean, we're talking about it in our boards rooms, we're talking about it in the community. I have parents calling me all the time. I have kids asking me about it. But we're not talking about the root of what we're trying to accomplish, which is a great career-ready product. So we're spending a lot of time on the cut that is on our body, but we're not talking about what's going to happen in the future of that. And how do we change that conversation so that we're really getting to the crux of this, which is people wanted accountability to know that we have the best products that are coming out of our schools at the end of the day so that we can be globally competitive?
Do you have a question?
And, and that's it. Well, that's it. How do we change the conversation to get it back kind of on the track to the product? Because otherwise, you're just going to keep fighting with legislatures.
Well, Chris actually kind of answered that. He said he didn't know how we would make that transition.
Yeah, I think the transition, I think this is the hard part. The rule I proposed in the last, my last comment is something I think we should all think about. So if we're, like, how many tests are we giving that don't matter to kids? Like, really? Like, so I would dig into that.
Because again, like, there's, when you talk about legislators, you talk about policymakers, I mean, everyone who stood up here as a board member has, I mean, so far, there's been board members asking these questions. We actually have some power and some ability to be in these conversations. I tend to think that either, and I'm going to go into my insecurity thing around, you know, school board members and superintendents. And I, and I started out actually saying, we need to actually get out of the way so that educators can actually help drive this. But on the other hand, I may want to pull that back and say, we need to actually be in partnership together. Help us think, design it with you, or what is it that we should be advocating for? And then we take some responsibility, school board members, to actually be in a place of listening right now and working with legisla, I mean, I, like, I want to work with you, Chris. There's no reason for all the local policymakers that are in our school boards. And again, whether they're appointed or whether they're elected, we need and want to be in those conversations, because we get yelled at too. We get yelled at by parents. We get yelled at, you know, I, I would say we don't get yelled at by young people in the same way that maybe we should. You should go check out your local school board people. So anyways, I, I, so I just, I just want to keep, I want to be visible in this. And I think school board members should be visible in this. I mean, again, we can think about it at a local level, if we need to be saying across our dais, you know, cut down testing or whatever. But I think to Chancellor's point though, sometimes she doesn't have any control, and she's bringing that to us, saying, "I have to do this." But we've got to figure out collectively how we can do the pushback. And I just, I keep, I know y'all are in the question piece, but I want to make sure that we, could we ask questions and, and pull up the modality? Again, I kind of went through this whole like, Black Woman Lens thing, because sometimes how you know if I'm improving or getting better or excited about something is really different than that bubble on a piece of paper. Right? Like, you can, I can do some things in a very different kind of way and show you that I'm learning, I'm growing, and I'm excited about your teaching. So I, I want to see us do that.
We have time for maybe three questions. Next.
So I'm Sue Gam, from Chicago, where I was a former administrator, and currently I'm a consultant that does a lot of work with the council and other folks. And I have a sort of a different question. So taking into consideration what was presented, if we did fewer tests, we might have better instruments to really measure what we want to measure. That's never going to happen by spring, right? And I've heard a lot of buzz over the past, oh, I don't know, period of time, that perhaps the park and smarter balance assessments aren't quite up for primetime. And concerns have been written and, you know, on social media around concerns with those, with those assessments, both implementing them and the questions that are being asked. So yesterday, an elephant came into the room, and if you don't know about it, you probably aren't here today, that Chicago has proposed moving out of giving the park. That's right. And my question is, while maybe that might happen, what would you say about having the assessment perhaps not count for this year? Giving it and not count, and using the lessons that is learned to improve the assessment? I'm just wondering where, especially the three school districts, where you would fall on this issue?
So both unions have asked for a two-year moratorium, so that those tests don't count. And I guess that's the question. Is that a good idea?
We already have it for two years. We've been testing the Common Core from the first year that was needed to.
But we're talking about the tests.
Yeah, that's what we're testing. That is our state test.
So you don't believe in the moratorium?
Well, well, I, I don't think we have a chance to get anything, because we moved to ACT, and they told us that, because it was more engaging for students, they told us that the federal government would not accept that. So now not only we're testing the kids on ACT, now we still have to do the state test.
Yeah, those states. So.
No, it's.
No, I got you, I got you, I got you. So I think Kaia should talk about the transition to park, because she'll know better than, than I will about that piece. But, and you guys are parked, or you're smart balance.
Yeah.
California's smart balance, so. Yeah, so I guess I think in Minnesota, what happened was you guys transitioned sooner to the assessment. So they sort of did have a period of time where, where it didn't count, right? And so now they're getting into, and they're not using either the consortia assessment. So I, I, I think the, the bottom line on this is we have states in all different places, Claudia. So I don't think we can say, everybody should take a delay or everybody shouldn't take a delay. I think we should say, the states and the districts in those states have to decide when they've had enough time to be ready to give these assessments for consequences. So that's how, how we would talk about it.
So in DC, I guess before we let out of school, I announced that we would not use, we, we will take the park, but there won't be consequences associated with the park so that we can appropriately transition. And I made that decision, not because my union asked me to. I made that decision because that was the right thing for Washington DC. In some places, that's not the right thing. And we don't, we have to differentiate, right? And so I think we have to be reasonable about what our children and our educators can do. We started with a Common Core-aligned curriculum four years ago. I actually think our folks are more prepared than a lot of people are going to be. But not having a baseline year where I understand where our young people are means that I, I lose time, right? And I have young people sitting in front of me every day, so I want the information. But I want to allow my educators the appropriate time to transition. So we've put things on hold.
Yep. Next question.
Could be a quick question. Steve Berger, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction and Equity, School District U46, with the second largest school district in the state of Illinois, outside of Chicago. My question is this. We continue to test our second language learners annually on a basis to determine whether or not they're qualified to move into an English instruction classroom. I'd like to know your opinion on the continued assessment of our second language learners?
I would say philosophically, I do not believe that the students need to be isolated before they learn English to go into the mainstream. I think you, it's like, you want to teach them science, or do you want to teach them vocabulary? So you have to teach it together. So, and the reason why we are testing ELLs, to me, it shouldn't be if you're going to move them into the access and the opportunity they are missing right now. So that's, that's one point I wanted to make clear. I do not believe you can measure English proficiency in a student that is coming from a refugee camp, which they have not been educated. That's my reality in St. Paul. And expect that in 12 months and one day, they will be able to be taking a third-grade test with the expectation they're going to be meeting the Common Core. So then we take an additional test with the students, because it's not either/or, it's both, to measure if they have grown in English. I don't believe we can measure that quick growth in the language in a year time with the current assessment tools that we have. Our state has developed the oral, the, the speaking and listening and all that, which is, seems really philosophically perfect. But when you are doing the speaking, you have a human being who's going to make the decision if you did it right or wrong. If when you're doing the, the reading is, where do you even start to measure the gains? So, and right now, our ELL students are double-tested, which I don't believe is helping them with their self-esteem. Neither is helping them with the belief that they ever going to speak English. Because we know our English-speaking students in third grade are struggling because of the kind of testing. If we would have all the time and the money in the world, I would not send anybody through a bubble test. And maybe it's my personal bias. I was a terrible test taker, and I don't think I'm that stupid. So the reality is, the, the, the testing modality that we currently have, it doesn't meet the needs of all students. And I know it's a, it's a matter of time, it's a matter of finances, it's a matter of accountability, and also knowing that what I'm going to expect is going to be the same that Kaia and her district is going to expect. So, and I would say, ELL students, especially newcomers, should be tested less often in the beginning years. And I know that Florida, I just found out that not long ago, have three-year waiver. Minnesota logically will only have one. But, and we need to do it nationally. If a three-year waiver means that we are not going to look at our ELL kids, and then because we don't have time and they don't give us a score, well, that's the wrong way to do this.
Thank you. Thank you. Last question.
Good afternoon. W. Shawna Gibbs, Columbus, Ohio City School Board Member. I have a question for you, Chris. Imagine on Ohio, we have a high-stakes test for third graders. It's the third-grade guarantee. If you're not on literacy level, by third grade, you will repeat it. And so on and so forth with everyone else with the high-stakes assessments. And what I find is the challenge is that it gives you a number, but it doesn't test grit, resiliency, motivation, and grind. It doesn't tell you how well you'll do if you really want it bad. So my question to you is, what is the courageous conversation you're having with the State Governors Association? Every legislature, they come out with a new great idea and totally make our staff, and we get holler at to turn around and change. But the state superintendents are appointed by governors. So I don't know how much authority or if they don't like their jobs or how comfortable they feel. They're going to go against the person that appoints them, but it's a vicious cycle. So there has to be a courageous conversation somewhere, because it is our state mandate. We can't go against ODE, and they're appointed by the governors. And if they're not in this conversation, you won't, we won't get culturally competent tests, which we've asked for for 20 years. We won't get the considerations for ELL, which we've asked for. So I don't hear any new information. I hear a lack of action in a place where it needs to occur, and we can't change it at the school board level. Our superintendents can't change it, yet we are all caught with the bag. So where is it going to change through the gubernatorial, the legislative, and the state superintendents, where they understand that it, it can be state by state, but it must be something?
Chris, it sounds like you just got your marching orders.
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you for that. And I, I will tell you, first off, I'm not going to comment specifically on what, what a certain state's doing, because that won't help in any certain way. But I'll talk about third-grade reading for a second. I think one of the things that has happened is, in third grade, there's good research that shows if kids aren't reading by third grade, then they got some trouble, right? Going ahead. So the logical, or at least outside of the education space, the logical thing was to then start passing these laws about third-grade reading. Except we didn't do anything in pre-K or kindergarten or first grade or second grade to make sure these kids are reading by third grade, right? So I, I, I actually think that there are ways specifically around third-grade reading that we can start having a conversation about what is the support we're going to provide kids before they get to this high-stakes thing for them, where they feel like, "Oh, at the end of third grade, I got to read, or else I'm not going on to fourth grade." I mean, no third grader wants to feel that way. I don't want to be a parent of a third grader that feels that way. So I think, I think, as in many things in education, this is a good idea that hasn't provided enough support along the way sometimes, in some situations. And in terms of governance, that's the American system. We are working with the Governors Association as much as we can. In some states, they are appointed by the governor. Here in Wisconsin, they are, the state superintendent's independently elected, and is actually a Democrat with a Republican governor. And that's caused different challenges. So I think, I think there, there are always conversations about how we govern the system, and we'll engage with those. But I hear your frustration. And I think what, the biggest thing I would walk away from is trying to figure out how we provide more support, support early on in those conversations.
I'd like to wrap this up with what I thought was a really good quote from a suburban school superintendent, very highly regarded, Montgomery County. He said, "Our addiction to testing is like addiction to diet pills. You take them hoping they're going to help you look better, but they're not a substitute for eating right and exercising." Thank you all. Thank you, panelists. And that's a wrap for our discussion today. Good job.